I'd like to call this meeting to order. Before we call a roll, I'd like to briefly explain why I'm sitting in the chair tonight, just for tonight. Some of you know that Councilman Tompkins had a terrible tragedy in his family, and he's wrestling with that right now. He asked that I serve his chair just for this evening. He will be back in two weeks, but that explains this new configuration just for tonight. Kathy, if you would please call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
Here.
Councilman Soto?
Here.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Here.
Councilman Votio?
Here.
Chairman Tompkins absent.
Before we go to the prayer and pledge which Councilman Spanbauer is going to conduct tonight, let's please rise and have a moment of silence for both Councilman Tompkins' family as well as former mayor and our good friend Vince Anello and his family.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to let everyone know that Mayor has asked that all city buildings have the flags at half-staff in memory of former Mayor Anello. He's also been able to have the illumination board light the Falls tomorrow, June 10th, in memory of Mayor Anello.
Okay, so we'll have a moment of silence and then Councilman Spanbauer will lead with the prayer and the pledge.
Oh God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech Thee in the wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberations of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also reach down to Thy greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, sovereign, and just for all.
Thank you, Councilman. We'll now move to, no, I'm sorry, we are not going to approve the minutes tonight. We're going to do that at the next meeting for both the meeting of the 26th and the special meeting for the 23rd. Is that correct? I'm sorry, and the special meeting from the first. Correct? Okay, so we also want to amend the agenda tonight. We have a presenter from Destination Niagara, and so can I have a motion to amend the agenda just to move the presenter before the public speakers?
Move to amend the agenda.
Kathy, if you'd call a roll to amend.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Votio?
Yes. So then Andrea, you are up.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Zott. I am the Vice President of Operations for Destination Niagara, USA. I know you have a very busy agenda tonight, so I'm going to move pretty quickly through this since all council members have the 2020 annual report in front of them. So obviously, we're in the past, we're beyond it. Hopefully, there's not another global pandemic for another hundred years at minimum. But you will see through the course of this report that even though tourists weren't coming, we did not sit around and do nothing. Right away from, as soon as that pandemic hit in March 2020, we were out through all of our social media channels and all of our marketing efforts, putting out soft, fuzzy message. Our initial was Destination of Hope. It was a video, just sort of a, "We're here for you. We'll still be here when you're ready to come back and travel, but in the meantime," you know, just kind of a warm and fuzzy message. So I think you were seeing a lot of that, you know, on TV with a lot of different commercials and ad space. Also, in the meantime, we were trying to highlight local businesses. There were a lot of businesses, as you well know, that were doing, you know, takeout dining, stay-at-home kits, different, you know, for instance, there was a bake shop that was doing make-your-own cookie kits and things like that. So we were putting out a lot of messaging of the things that could be done locally still to help local businesses. So not only were we obviously putting that out to a drive market, we were also doing a lot more marketing right within our own backyard in Western New York. So that's really what you're going to see here through the multiple marketing phases that go through the pages. So that was marketing phase one. That was really the effort, was that softer, gentler messaging. Marketing phase two was in anticipation of New York State reopening phase four, which was last year, right before the Fourth of July. So we started putting out messaging called "Dream Now, Adventure Later." That was really to start getting people in that four-hour drive market thinking about where they were going to go when they wanted to be outside and do something. There was a lot of pent-up demand even last summer in the middle of a pandemic, and so we wanted to make sure we were capturing those who wanted to get in their car and travel safely, didn't necessarily want to get on an airplane. We know international was gone last year, so we were really just trying to focus on the people that we could capture. So that's what we did in marketing phase two. And then marketing phases three and four were wide-open spaces, now open for adventure, where we highlighted all of the open space that we have, not just here in Niagara Falls, but across Niagara County, which obviously we promote all of. So that was really our effort there, was to get people out and about as much as possible. We actually did fare much better than a lot of other destinations across the country, even though it wasn't a great year, I'm not going to pretend it was. It was crappy, but it wasn't as crappy as crappy could be, I guess is the kindest way to say it. Our hotel occupancy did increase from, pretty significantly, from June to July last year when things started to reopen. We really did start to get people back in smaller numbers, but we did, we saw some of it. So that's what you saw from us in phases three and four, was really pushing those local markets and the drive market. First, we started with four hours, then we saw six hours was showing really well on all of our data, so we pushed out to seven, and then we even pushed out as far as eight hours because we were getting a lot of New York City, Connecticut. So, you know, we pushed pretty hard within eight hours for pretty much all of this spring, summer, and fall. And then once winter came, we started focusing back on staycations because the numbers started to surge again. So the beauty of the way we market, everything that we do is digital, so we're able to change course within a matter of minutes. And so when those numbers started to surge again and people were pulling back on travel, that's when we really started focusing again on Western New York in a very targeted 716 range, to do staycations, to highlight again back to that shop local, local businesses, the dining at a distance, things like that. So that's really what we focused on through the late fall and winter of last year. You'll see on page 11 is our cumulative results from all of the marketing campaigns that we conducted throughout the pandemic. All of our ads, everything that we did, including social media and our digital ads, had a total of 138 million impressions. That means eyeballs. Impressions are how many eyeballs saw what we did. So we were pretty impressed and pretty happy with those numbers considering it was, again, a global pandemic. And you'll see on the next page, oh, and the Connected TV, I should have mentioned Connected TV because it's, obviously, it was a really much bigger deal in a pandemic when everybody's staying home, watching Apple TV and Netflix, and so we bought ads on Connected TV as well. And those were, we had an 83% completion rate on those, and the average typically is about 70%. So we did better than average on people watching our video all the way through to the end, so. And they weren't forced to. They could skip it if they wanted, so it's important to know. Our website actually did exceptionally well. We had a 55% increase in website visitation over 2019. A lot of that was because a lot of people were dreaming and planning and not able to travel. So we saw an enormous increase in our website visitation over several data points, so we were really happy with that as well. Earned Media, which is when we pitched to national media outlets to get to cover stories, we continued to do that through the pandemic. Typically, it's more stories about, you know, people coming to visit and what you can do while you're visiting. This past year during the pandemic, there was a lot of people, a lot of writers looking to cover stories about local heroes, about virtual experiences. So on page 13, you'll see we highlighted some of our top stories that we had gotten, including a Reader's Digest story, "14 Meaningful Ways People Are Saying Thank You to Nurses." And we had pitched a gentleman from Lewiston who was making ventilators. He owns a metal company, but he was making, he invented a contraption that he was donating to local hospitals, and so they highlighted that. So even though it's not necessarily about visiting Niagara Falls, it gets Niagara Falls in front of people in, you know, 2.7 million readers. So we continue to do that as well. Of course, you'll see, obviously, convention and meeting sales had to take a backseat. People weren't coming for conventions and meetings, all of those were canceled, but we did continue to reach out to meeting planners. Meeting planners typically like to come and do what's called a site visit. They want to see what the hotel looks like, they want to see what the meeting space looks like before they book. Because they weren't able to travel and because they weren't able to do that, we developed a 360-degree video where we did the state park, we did all of the hotels that are considered convention hotels, as well as the convention center, and we were sharing those with meeting planners so that they could virtually see everything that we have to offer, even in the event of not being able to come visit. And then finally, our travel guide. We print 500,000 travel guides typically in a year, and even though a lot of people think books are going away and people don't want them, for whatever reason, ours has always been still popular. We get a lot of requests. So that we didn't have to recycle so many, we ended up working out deals with a lot of newspapers across the country, including the Boston Globe, Chicago Tribune, Philadelphia Inquirer, and then our local papers, to put that as an insert in those newspapers so that we were getting it in more hands rather than having to recycle them since they weren't going out the door. So that's the general overview of what was happening in tourism marketing during a pandemic. And then just really quickly, I wanted to give you an update on where we are today. So our spring and summer marketing campaigns launched March 15th. They're performing exceptionally well, and we had a 192% increase in website visitation May over May this year to last year. And so we're seeing a lot of activity. The hotel occupancy rates over Memorial Day weekend were very strong. The Saturday of Memorial Day weekend was 97.2% occupancy. The national average was 82.9%, so we were really happy with our numbers there. And then the Sunday of Memorial Day weekend was 89.2%, and the national average was 68.1%. So I think we're going to have a really strong summer. I think we're already seeing it, and we're hopeful that it's going to be better than we even anticipated. Any questions I can?
Gentlemen?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrea, with all the digital media use that Destination Niagara employs, is there a way to track the actual people who show up to Niagara Falls as to where they got their information from?
We have, we actually have multiple research points, so what we do, and it's actually really creepy, but that's, you know how when you're on the internet and it'll ask you if you want to disable your cookies? If you don't disable those cookies, we follow you all the way through to booking. So if you hit our website now, we're on you until you do whatever it is that you do, even if it's a couple of months. So we have all of that research, and we know exactly what you looked at, we know exactly how many hotels you searched. We have it all. Like I said, it's a little creepy, but it's helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, folks, so now we'll move to the public speaking portion. We'll start out with speakers for agenda items, Kathy?
Gene Corolla?
Hello, Gene.
Hi, how are you?
I'm okay.
Had to do my glasses.
Of course.
Okay, I am Gene Corolla. I am the operator along with my son of the Hyde Park Ice Facility since 2012. I noticed that on your agenda tonight, you have a item in which you are, well, asked to award the operations of the rink to another operator, and obviously, I'd like to speak against that. I don't know if anybody's been to Hyde Park Ice Facility lately, but we turned it into a pretty nice avenue. When we first started in 2012, you really didn't want to go there. It was absolutely horrible. And we spent two, three, almost four years working with the city in the redesign of the ice facility. We've invested huge amounts of money, not only the city's, but ours. In a couple of minutes, I'm going to give you an idea of the economic impact. But right now, in the facility, all the tables, the chairs, the bar, the cooler, the entire kitchen except for the hoods, and I can go on and on, belonged to us, also 300 pairs of rental skates. So we estimate it's about $70,000 worth of investment that we put in that the city had no association with. Now, part of Niagara Sports Tournament, we started off as a tournament business. Back in 1992, I started the business. We were working out of Hyde Park, and then eventually, we were moved to Niagara University. And we operated up until about 2004, and then we moved over to the Hyde Park Ice Facility. Now, I'm going to tell you a little bit about the tournaments. We are responsible for five tournaments, and some of our colleagues are responsible for seven. It's approximately 12 tournaments a year, and they bring in a huge number of people. I'm just going to give you, I know I'm limited in time, so I'm going to give you the best of. Typically, we bring in somewhere around 21,600 rooms per year that's associated with the hockey tournaments. We figure we bring in over 40,000 people that are associated with hockey tournaments, those that we can actually track. The visitors' expenses, whether they be food, meals, shopping, somewhere around $3,800 over the course of the year. When we figured out the tax implications, the room revenues just from our hockey tournaments was over $2.5 million. The food expenses was about $1.8 million. The shopping, again, over $2 million. Now, what's the city's end to this? They pulled in over $640,960. Now, for the last two years, we were fortunate enough. We've made that rink so nice that New York State approached us, and we had a New York State finals, two years. First year, we got clipped because of Cota. We had some of it, we had some the year before, but this year, they did three weekends, which brought people from all over New York State. And that was really nice. It's nice to hear that they liked our facility, they liked what we did, they liked how we operated, they liked the amenities that we have available to our people. Now, if you've ever been a hockey parent, you know, you spend a lot of time sitting and waiting and watching, so obviously, being a hockey parent, we tried to react to that. We tried to fill up the lounge with comfortable seating. We made homemade pizza available, hot chocolate, coffee, things that people want, popcorn, obviously. So we tried to feed the people, make them feel decently, all at a reasonable, reasonable cost. As I said, I know my time's coming to an end here, but I was kind of shocked that we were not chosen. We do have the experience. My son went to school for ice making, maintenance. I don't know if the other group has that type of experience. I don't know if they have any experience running a rink, other than maybe working there, emptying, working around a rink and doing whatever maintenance they need to do. But we've been in there, we know how to operate that place, we made it nice. One of the things that we did, which we're really, really proud of this year, is that we were able to reestablish a complete hockey program at Hyde Park. Now, the last time there was a hockey program, I mean, a complete house and travel, was with NU or the Purple Eagles, which was almost 20 years ago. Now, my son and a few other people have been working, and they have now established...
Thank you, Gene.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Thanks, Gene.
I knew I was going to go over.
Michael Corolla? Chair Schiels?
Hello. Hello. My name is Chair Schiels. I'm Vice President of Niagara Falls Tourist Home Association. After the emergency meeting on June 1st implemented on the moratorium on new STR permits, I asked Council Chair Tompkins, "Why stopping the legal process for getting a license was considered an effective way to address STRs operating without a license?" His response was, and I quote, "Do you know how many STR applications we've received since the last moratorium was lifted? Ninety-two. How is code enforcement supposed to handle that kind of volume?" Needless to say, that didn't answer my question. How is it okay to stop or prevent the legal use of a property just because the city needs more time to get its act together? In regards to having an STR zone, in the last city council meeting, the mayor interrupted the vote on Agenda Item 11, which was relative to expressing support for locally enhanced infrastructure projects. He stressed that spreading those projects and funds equitably throughout the whole city is essential. So why would spending government infrastructure money throughout the entire city be important, but restricting private citizens from spending their own money to operate STRs be limited to just the downtown area of the city? We've been told it will be, we've been told it will address a huge STR problem. We saw a group at the last city council meeting complaining about one STR in their neighborhood. Are there any complaints on file for that five-star pristine property that has nothing but glowing reviews from its guests? One neighbor said they were so fearful of the strange cars and people that she got a pistol from it. Surely, if she was that afraid for her safety, she called the police, right? It was also stated that they contacted the city multiple times. So are there complaints filed with code enforcement? We want fact-based, evidence-based decisions. We don't want bad actors either. That's why we submitted a FOIA request over a year ago for a list of police and code enforcement complaints. Still remains unfulfilled. In order to enforce the current STR ordinance and the long-term rental ordinance for that matter, police and code enforcement need to have on hand, or at least readily available, the list of police and code enforcement complaints. Either you haven't fulfilled our FOIA request because either A, that list doesn't exist, or there's poor tracking, or no complaints, or B, you want us to know how many, you don't want us to know how many complaints have been made because there's nothing been done to enforce them. Here's the facts I've been able to determine so far. Two days after the neighbor's complaint in the last city council meeting, an emergency meeting was held to vote on an STR moratorium. The moratorium passed in that meeting without any opportunity for public comment. Every sign held up in that room was against passing it. Best I can tell, based on the data I have so far, this is clearly a neighbor dispute that's escalated, been escalating for some time, and the mayor and some city council members have listened to this dispute and used it to further their own agenda. Today, another step is being taken to advance those efforts. A resolution on today's agenda regarding the section of the current zoning ordinance that is titled "Effect of Planning Board Recommendation," and it states, "No amendment of this zoning ordinance that has not been approved by the planning board shall be adopted except by unanimous vote of city council." Last year, one city council member did their job and voted against passing a new STR ordinance that city and county planning boards had also not approved. He was doing his job because he listened to the more than 20-plus people that spoke at that meeting with concerns over the proposed ordinance and the 538 signatures that were gathered in less than a week stating the same. Instead of listening to the xenophobic fears of strange cars and people from all over the neighborhood, all over the world, staying in our neighborhood, which remains the only thing that I've heard from citizens who are against STRs. When Councilmember Votio held up his hands in frustration and said to the room full of constituents that made their desires clear, "What do you expect me to do?" The answer I gave then, and that remains the same now, and I'll repeat, "Do your job. If you have information and data that would change opinions and support rationale for going against what the majority of the citizens want, then share it." Are you listening to the overwhelming demand from residents, from tourists? What data do you have to support your claims that STR is an issue? We've been asking for data and evidence for over a year now, and instead of providing it and collaborating with us, with us that have different views, according to tonight's agenda, you'll be discussing with each other how you can change the rules so that the vote of one council member, ironically, the one doing his job and listening to the people, won't matter next time. Near the end of the introduction to the report, the recent report on social justice, the mayor states, "By remaining committed to the goals outlined in this report and realizing change comes through people working together and not by government fiat, we can and will move our city forward to a more just and equitable place." I couldn't agree more with this statement, and I'm putting my faith in you to show your actions are committed to working together and stopping what to date has been government fiat. You've denied requests to work together, held emergency meetings without public comment, and implemented un-moratoriums that hurt the city's progress. If that isn't government fiat, I don't know what is.
Thank you. Say that one more time, Kathy.
Dante Maas.
Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. I have a concern, and my concern basically is with our local government. I'm talking about our city council, for the most part, and our administration. Myself, and actually, I definitely want to start off even by, you know, paying homage and giving condolences to the Anello family because he told me something a long time ago. He said, "If you're scared, say it while you're scared," right? And I've come to this podium multiple times, addressing a lot of issues and concerns. But it's not just me, it's many other people, such as, you know, Mr. Anello, Ron Andrew and other people. And a lot of times, I feel like we've hit brick walls. I feel like we've been talking to clay figures, people who are not paying us any attention. I spoke with clarity my concern concerning this zone, this Agenda Item Number Nine, as it pertains to premature gentrification. And I gave the administration, I gave you guys here the opportunity to hear me. I didn't yell, I didn't use profanity. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, you guys understood the job that you were hired to do by us, right? So hardly ever, almost never, do we ever get a follow-up. Like, I spoke about gentrification and displacement of people into a community that I know is going to harm, right? And never do we ever get the response of, "Hey, let me show you why this is not going to gentrify." I don't own a short term, I'm not a short-term advocate, I'm coming from a different angle so you guys can understand how holistic this problem is. I understand, like, the hoax, you know, the homeowners, what is it, homeowners loan corporation, redlining maps, the zoning laws. This is the stuff that pretty much screws a certain portion of our city. There's certain areas of our city that don't have to deal with a lot of the crap that the, let me just make it plain, 4th District, that's a heavy portion of where our crime, we're talking about our crime, stabbings and shootings. As a peacemaker, I have, we have been called to different scenes and different prayer vigils where we had to watch mothers and kids cry in the middle of the street at the morning of their friends and their family. And I'm speaking on that because what's going to happen, and it will happen, is that people will get displaced, and they will get pushed into an area that's already struggling. Problem is, is I'm not here to chop off the legs of those who have. I'm here to restore the have-nots. There's a lot of people who don't have, people who are hurting, people who deal with this on a regular. Most of you are going to walk out of this room, you're going to go in your car, you're going to pull out of the parking lot. Some of you are going to turn right, go down to devote, live in your comfort zone, and some of you are going to go to your other areas. My thing is, is this, are we, is our local government going to continue My thing is, is this, are you, we, i- is our local government gonna continue to keep building these walls? I wish, I, I, I'm quite sure our mayor will hear this when he get a chance, um, but we keep building these walls and we, and living in a myth because that myth is comfortable, it's safe. It doesn't hit you at your front doorstep. I say, um, there's a battle we're fighting of apathy between two, two charges. Apathy within the community because they feel they've lost hope, and apathy with you guys because it feels like you're not really engaging the rest of us that keeps coming here and talking to you about these issues, and you're not bringing back any resolve, you're not bringing back any re- resolutions. I feel like you're just going back to the board, back to the drawing board, just to come up, just to push an agenda forward. That's a problem. That's been a problem, it will always be a problem. So therefore, all I, what I'm asking is for transparency, accountability, but mainly integrity, because I don't feel like we're, our, our local government is operating out of the spirit of integrity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jacqueline Fryer, and I live at 507 Fifth Street. And I applaud you because I could not have said that even better, so I'm gonna just skip over that, but everything he said, it is true, and I have a lot of incidents and situations to back up what he said. But I'll go to the granting of, um, funds for the aquarium, and they always say it's for the residents and it's for the tourists. Well, to make that true, make sure that our residents who are deprived of funds don't have extra money for those prices, to make sure that those families of Niagara Falls have free passes when they do all these fabulous grants, all this fabulous money, because our children should not have to look at buildings that's being built and can't go into them. This is our home. We, we not gonna be, uh, catering to people who come in to Niagara Falls even though we love them, but we not gonna keep serving people. We want, you know, we want to show our kids exactly what people from out of town get. So just don't close us out. You know, Florida has ways they do it for people for Disneyland, we can be a Disneyland too. Just any project, not just the aquarium, and you know, a lot of money is coming. You know, a lot of money that's been gone out of community development, they say three million. Can we get that money back and try some stuff? So, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Hello, Ms. McLean?
Good eve- good evening, my name is Daisy McLean. I go to Maple Avenue School. I am in the first grade. My teacher's name is Ms. Kressman. I am here today to tell you about how when my mom takes me to the park and I can't swing because there are, are too many kids there, my mom will get in the car and take us to other parks where it's the same story, no swings, so I am asking you today to consider building more parks for the city of Niagara Falls, maybe even a swing park because I know my friends and other kids will enjoy it a lot. Thank you for listening to me about this important topic.
Good job. Praise the Lord. Praise the Lord.
Good evening.
Good evening, good evening. Praise the Lord. I couldn't have did it as better as Daisy, okay? Praise God. And, um, before I start, I also like to give my condolences to, uh, Vincent Anello, the family, also Mr. Kennedy, no, Mr. Thompson, you got that, Mr. Kennedy. Mr. Thompson's family. Um, I'm here today on behalf of these brave, praise the Lord, and I'm going to start off by saying good evening. Mayor Ristano, which I know he's not there, and members of Niagara Falls City Council. I'm here on behalf of the children you see here tonight, as well as the children who are not here and can't speak for themselves. I'm appealing to the city fathers to consider the happiness of black children. They too deserve a healthy and playful childhood. Most of you sitting here can remember going to the playground and swinging on the mucky bars, sliding down the slide, or the teeter-totter with your friend at one end and you at the other. But these children sitting here cannot say that about their neighborhood. Most do not have much. In order to reenforce hidden gifts of a child, they must have an opportunity, an opportunity to blossom, and many times, it comes through playing. If you will take a close look at Glove Park, where there is only a basketball court and no play equipment for children, that is for a clear reason. It is not a playground, it is a basketball court, and therefore, a place for older youth. No children should be subject to the filthy language, disrespect towards one another, and violence. Men standing strong together have given this problem some deep thought. An accessible solution would be to remove the basketball court and replace it with a playground that would accommodate families, children, and youth, one in which the community and the city of Niagara Falls can be proud, a state of art. As it is now, Glove Park is a disgrace to the memory of Pastor Ray Vaughn. Hallelujah. It is used for gambling, sex, filthy language, violence, and even taking the life of one young man. But we do not blame young people, because what is there positive for them to do? The Bible says, "An idle mind is the devil's workshop." We have a responsibility to meet the needs of those less fortunate, for all children. Children should have, should not have to beg to enjoy life, it should be their basic right for their safety, well-being, and the future. I am appealing to each of you, do what is right. Sit down with the community and use money that is available to serve the, these children and save lives. Now, it's too often, you come here and you have to say, "Black and white." When are we gonna get beyond that? It's time out for that black and white stuff. Children deserve to be heard, they deserve to have and enjoy life. And as I said, now, if any of you all go through the city of Niagara Falls, tell me where you're gonna find a playground. Praise the Lord. So, we thought about Reverend, Pastor Glenn Ray Vaughn, it would be nice to say Glenn, Reverend Glenn Ray Vaughn Children's Park, a place where you can even have reunions when you have family come in. And then another thing about even Legend Park, did you notice there's no shelter there? These young people play out in the hot sun. It's a wonder someone has not had a serious, healthy, a, a serious, uh, health problem, because there's no shade there. So let's take that into consideration. Whatever money you have, they pay taxes. These babies don't pay taxes, but they will one day. So I hope you see what they're saying to you. We need better playgrounds in our communities, safe playgrounds, swings, and et cetera. And Ms. Daisy, God bless you, you did a great job. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to come out to, um, say I'm new to the city, not so new because I've been here for a while, and I agree with what a lot of people have spoken of, because I remember coming here and not seeing, um, playgrounds at the schools. That was kinda odd to me because coming from Colorado, we had playgrounds at every school. We even have basketball courts, tetherballs, we have Foursquare, we have activities for the kids to do so they can engage in other things with their mind, instead of being closed up in a building and have nothing else to do but just be in school without nothing else outside to participate in. So I was very, you know, thrown back by that, you know, being in the city, not having those things in parks as they spoke of, with playgrounds and different other things for, um, kids to do, teenagers to do, you know, and, um, I'm not against anything that anyone said, but, um, I feel that if there was more, um, like, more footwork, more people that were at these parks, so therefore, maybe the basketball, because I have a son, he plays basketball, and I'm sure there's a whole lot of other kids that play basketball too, you know, and I'm not opposing against what anyone said about taking it out, but taking it out, is that gonna, you know, cause things not to be like they are? Uh, you know, is it gonna get better? You know, we want better, we wanna make sure things are better in the city of Niagara Falls. We wanna make sure that even with the parks, that they are well-maintained, that if there is something broken, like say for instance, if the, uh, part of the pavement where the kids are playing on these equipments, they're not broken and part of it is torn out and torn to pieces, are the parks being well-maintenance every day? Are people out there looking and seeing, are these things safe for our children to go to these parks and the play? Are, is that being maintained? So that's something as we as citizens want to make happen in this city, because you know, when we vote people into office, they're being voted to also meet our needs, and then not everybody needs are being met in the city of Niagara Falls. I live on 19th Street. I live there in a hood, I get out among the people. You know, if I could, if I lived in Lewiston, if I lived in Devotee, I would get out among the people, because that's the type of person I am, you know? So the thing of it is, in order for you to understand what we are coming from and what the people's needs are, you need to get out in the community and begin to feel and talk to the people, they're human. They may not, they may not be like everyone else, but they're human. They, they, they had a bad plot in life that happened to them that caused them to be where they're at. It doesn't make them not human, it doesn't make them not have feelings, and it doesn't make them, uh, not have wants or needs. They still have those things, right? So what we want you all to do is to, I understand the Falls is a nice place, you know, it's a, it's a nice place to go to, but the Falls is not the only place. Niagara Falls here with the nice water and stuff, that's not the only part of the Niagara Falls, New York. People just think when they come here, that's all they see and that's all they know. There are people that live beyond that. This community needs more help than what we're getting. I've been here, we'll say, like, just about eight years, and since I've been here, I really haven't seen really nothing done. I, just, just being really honest. I remember coming down Buffalo Avenue, and I remember, you know, and all the potholes and all of that, and I'm like, wow, what's going on? And you know, in Colorado, you can call 311, call them, they survey the area, they send someone out, and they get the job done. I call, they say, well, that's the city, that's the government. I'm like, I don't even know whose fault it is, I said, but you got a world wonder here and people have to travel down here when they get off the highway, and they have to come through this? It wasn't a few days later, they started fixing these streets. Well, there's a whole lot more people need to be fixed in the city of Niagara Falls. We just can't continue to overlook it and just say, oh, well, it's not my fault, it's not in my neighborhood, it's not my children. It is. When you're voting in office, it is yours. It's all ours. We all have to do something about it. We all have to do something about what's going on in this city. We have to make a difference in our young people's lives, we have to be an example. If they wanna run for a city councilman, if they wanna run for mayor, they have to see examples that the mayor, the city councilman, wherever you are working in office, that you are being an example for the good of the people. You are making changes and it's happening. How would they wanna be if, what, they're gonna sit up and do nothing? No. It has, things have to happen, change has to come. And we can't just say, we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. If we have money in the city, of which I know we do, then we need to take that money, get together with everyone in here, let's come up with the thing that ideas, and let's make it happen. Let's not put it on and then two years down the line, we're still preaching and saying the same thing. We should not be saying the same thing. Something should have happened in all this time. I've been sitting here, living here this ti- and nothing has really happened. And that's all I wanna say, let's make it happen.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here to speak on behalf of Mike and Jean Corrella for High Park Ice Pavilion. Um, as we know, Mike and Jean have, uh, ran it for the last nine years, and honestly, if you've lived in this city before they took it over, High Park Ice Pavilion was an eyesore. The only people that went there were older gentlemen that played bar league and wanted to drink in the bar rooms afterwards, and one or two high school teams. After they took it over, there's now hundreds of kids that are attending hockey, who have learned to skate, who are continually going there because of Jean and Mike, and only Jean and Mike. I grew up playing Grand Niagara at High Park. The organization from Grand Niagara then left High Park and went to NU because of the city and the city alone. They wanted to run it their way, and everybody left. Now, after nine years from Jean and Mike turning it around and actually having a hockey destination in the city of Niagara Falls once again, the city government has decided against it once again. Unfortunately, the people that are now supposedly winning this contract, we left, and North Tonawanda Lightning because of these people. They ran their own organization into the ground. That is why North Tonawanda is no longer, and moved to High Park under Jean and Mike. Jean and Mike have not only brought hundreds of kids there, there's now girls' teams there playing because of Jean and Mike. It's not always about money, it's not always about that. You gotta start looking at what people do for this community. Jean and Mike have put their heart and soul for the last nine years into the High Park, and it shows. All you have to do, go, go in there on any given day and you'll see hundreds of kids smiling, learning to skate because of Jean and Mike, nobody else. It's not always about money. And if you guys vote for this contract, you guys are gonna be doing a disservice to this community and the kids' parents that have put time and effort in the High Park ice rink. This administration should not have sent out an RFP after nine years of successfully turning around High Park Ice Pavilion. It's just not right. I hope that you guys do the right thing and vote against it. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move for the good of the community? Curtis Dubois?
Good evening. Good evening. I'm Curtis Dubois of eighty-nine nineteen Brookside Drive, round the corner from nine-one-seven Creekside, which you were, I bombarded with at your last regular meeting. Um, right now, I feel a little embarrassed bringing, taking your time up on this small matter with all the other problems going on in the city, but I'm here to defend what neighbors had brought up against us at your last meeting. I've lived and worked in Niagara Falls my whole life, have had Creekside for thirteen years, and we began the short-term rental there three years ago. My wife and I have been the most conscientious operators, which is why we have earned a five-star super host rating, which from Airbnb, that is the top book that you can get from all the customer reviews and from Airbnb's reviews. We have followed every city requirement as a legal, short-term rental, right from the start, inspections, permits, everything that, we went by the book. In this three years, not one single code violation, all this time, not one single police report of any trouble at the house. Oh, I'm sorry, there was one report, I filled it out a month ago because somebody came up to the b- up to the back of the house and shot out two kitchen windows. We have gone out of our way to accommodate our neighbors. At your last meeting, one of them stated, there's fires at the house. Ten years ago, we had a bonfire out there, which was, according to the laws, legal, but the fire department came out and said, it's legal, but the neighbors complained. We put it out. What did we do? We built a gas fireplace so there would be no more problems. Put up a six-foot privacy fence along the pool, eight-foot of shrubs along the road, so the adjoining neighbors can't even see the pool unless they get up and look over the top. Now, a few of the neighbors have formed the block club, or I'd better describe it as a bullying club. They apparently became enraged when we bought a second house down the street. For our personal use, we are moving into it. The group's sole intention, and I quote them, "We will put you out of business," end quote. How are they implementing their plan with us? Number one, calling you council members, the mayor's office, code enforcement, every week to complain. I'm sure you're sick of hearing the word Creekside. Their rationale, if you repeat a lie often enough, people will start to believe it. Now, they're walking up and taking pictures of guests as they're enjoying the yard in the pool. One of my guests two weeks ago, happened to be a retired police officer from Ohio, he followed this lady two houses down to her house and said, what goes here? What are you doing taking pictures of me? She reported to him, oh, your group is very quiet, but we don't like it in our neighborhood and we are watching everybody that comes here. That's harassment. Yes, we do welcome people of all colors and creeds to our home. Hispanics, people of color, Muslims, Asians, no regard to their sexual orientation. We list on the website our home as family dream living. Bring your family to Niagara Falls to enjoy the American dream. And we, people have such an enjoyable time, they are coming back for the second and third years in a row because of such a good experience. We have followed every rule for the short-term rentals. Other neighbors directly adjacent to the complainants, they have no problem with visitors, no problems with noise, no problem if they hear kids laughing in the pool. This group of complainers creeks, Creekside Drive, as if it were a private gated community rather than a public street. Our driveway isn't even on Creekside, it's on Pasadena. It seems hypocritical to me that one of those complainants probably states they own Airbnb in Florida. Another one actually, two houses away rents rooms out of his own house. Don't confuse this councilman with a short-term rental problem. This battle in the neighborhood began long before the short-term rentals. It's a battle of neighbor hating neighbor.
Thank you, sir.
Hello.
Oh, come with you.
I'm gonna reiterate that I feel a little embarrassed speaking in front of this crowd that I have to repeat my addresses of what I own and what I maintain and how wonderful my pool is. It really shows that people are not very conscientious of their communities or their neighbors, and it is embarrassing. But first, I want to state, I'm not a bad actor or investor or wreaking havoc on Niagara Falls neighborhoods. I'm not even gonna give dignity to the paragraphs about where I live, but I will say, my sister and husband Laurie and Terry Jaclyn are moving into my mom's house. So when we left Creekside, we moved to Brookside, which is attached to Creekside, and lived there. We try to be good ambassadors to the city. We offer people suggestions of every local establishment to attend, to patronage. You know, this is gonna be extra important as we open the Canadian border, that we keep these dollars on our side of the border. I changed a little bit today because I had a police call to my house again, and I think that this is becoming just a ridiculous tip for tat. My neighbor called that when I cleaned the pool, when I hit the net on the fence, stuff goes in her yard. Well, it is her willow tree, and I did say to the policeman, because it's so ridiculous, well, I've returned them to the property owner. I mean, honestly, I've, she said, how do you know? I said, well, the maple tree falls, those are my things and I'll pick them up. To say, and the policeman actually said to me, to listen to this nonsense, and it is nonsense. It's not a short-term rental problem. Now, Mr. Spanbauer gave me a perfect suggestion. He said he had, Councilman Spanbauer, he had investigated that a municipality in Florida has, or had the ordinance of a noise tracker. So, the association today, they, somebody is doing a test pilot study with them, and they've installed this in my house, at my house. So if a noise level goes above a certain decibel, set for different times of the day, this rings to my phone, and I can immediately take care of any situations that arise. I've given my, my neighbors my cellphone number and I've offered many, many times, if you have a problem, please, call me, day or night. I live right there. I have to drive by the house 20 times a day to go anywhere. We're at the pool every morning at 6:30 to open it up, clean it, because it takes three hours for the sweep to run, so when the guests wake up, it's ready to go. I don't want to fight. I don't want to not get along with my neighbors. It just, it's exhausting. This has been emotionally draining to read such stuff about ourselves. This is not who we are at all. I want to get along with my neighbors. We are counting, we planned on, my husband unfortunately returning 65 soon, and we were counting on the short-term rental money as part of our retirement. We felt it was good for the neighborhood because we're there to maintain the property. We bought a house two doors closer to even keep a better eye. We're there to maintain the property. Any bad actors will be put out immediately. I did put one group out, and I beat the police there. Somebody said, there's a problem at your house. I was there before the police. I had their mother on the phone and they were gone. A mother rented the house for her children and left. I ended that. If really somebody's kind of a crummy guest, they're gone in two days. If you get a crummy long-term renter, you're stuck with them. If you try to evict a long-term renter from a property, it's terrible. I believe that we should not be listing, spending city resources. I did hear that I don't pay my occupancy tax, but I am one of the rentals that pays every penny of my occupancy tax. I pay my $5,600 property taxes, no star, which I should not have because it is a rental. I would like those tax dollars to support neighborhoods that need to be supported and not be addressing the Karens whining that there's strangers in the neighborhood. It is time to bury this hatchet on this nonsense and for all of us to be good neighbors and wish for good things for everybody in our city. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Laurie Jaclyn?
Good evening.
I'm Laurie Jaclyn. My sister is Kathy DuBois. I'm here as a character witness on behalf of my sister Kathy and my brother-in-law Curtis DuBois. We are gonna, my husband and I are gonna be living in our deceased mother's home on, which has been a dream of ours, to live close by our retirement years out with our spouses. And our beloved brother and sister-in-law David Lisa Tagg live in LaSalle. Many of our adult children live there as well. Kurt's loving, wonderful family lives there also. It's like coming home to me. We were raised half in Niagara Falls, half in LaSalle, and I just want to speak a little bit about, if I could, as young girls, my sister and I worked at my, for many years, at my husband's family business, Michael's Restaurant. I also worked for many years for Kurt and Kathy at DuBois Physical Therapy. Our entire family has seen Kathy and Kurt and their youngest son Paul, who works with them, work at an unbelievable pace, not just remodeling homes. I'm talking down to the rafters, restoring homes to welcoming truly places of beauty. I've never met another soul with a more welcome, open-door policy. From their first home on Cuba Drive, I'm not sure if anyone's familiar with the big white house with the fence, that was their first home on Cuba Drive, close to Williams Row. But it's, I mean, the investment they've made, instead of like just going to retire in California, if anyone, and they welcome people to come see what they've done to the home on Sixth Street. It's astonishing. It's new electric, new kitchens, new, it's just incredible. I'm proud to be moving in a house, they redid my mom's house, and my husband being in the restaurant business, you know, doesn't have a pension, and we've been so grateful to the city for the patronage. We stayed open through the pandemic. We love the city. We have so many heart, causes that are near and dear to our hearts. It's just a very sad thing to hear these untruths said about my beloved sister who would give you the shirt off her back. I can tell you, working for them, my sister, many patients who are going through injuries waited long periods of time for their medical transportation. She would find snacks, food. Patients that arrived with children were never turned away who could not find sitters. Magically, my sister would have arrived with crayons, pencils, paper, goodies from the kitchen. It was a very homelike atmosphere to work in at Du- I'm not sure if any of you are patients there, but our family motto is, we want good things for all families, not just our family. And I have a passion as a member of St. John de LaSalle and also Gaskell, where my son is a teacher who feels his jobs are calling. And my daughter, who's a nurse, my sister invited us over for two hours after she works, she's worked through the whole pandemic, for this little aunt's mother rela-, little swim at her place, the Airbnb on Creekside. And they didn't really notice my sister was cooking and my daughter was swimming. The neighbor sat on the deck and watched us the entire time.
Could you speak into the mic?
Oh, sorry. The entire time. And when we took a walk down the street to see her newest, I mean, this house needs everything and it'll be gorgeous when she's done. It's an asset to the city, what she, what they do, and the kindness that they bestow on a stranger. I know my sister to find a person walking with a box from Home Depot and pick them up and drive them to wherever they may live. You will never meet better people than my sister and Kurt, and I urge you on behalf, and I'm praying for our city, that we can go back, we can go forward in a positive, loving light. I'm praying for that. And I, I have to say, I felt sad for the man that was staring and trying to intimidate us because I thought, enjoy your life. It's so short. Why are you staring at us? I felt very unsettled by it, but I didn't want to ruin the time. And I didn't even go in order here. And also, they do their own spotless cleaning to a standard to be admired. They're landscaping themselves. It's not like we're rich people.
Thank you, Lauren.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Cherish Fields?
Hello again.
Hi again. So what I'm about to say has not endorsed or reflects any of the views of the NFTHA. I'm speaking to you as an individual. Cherish Fields, 741 Park Place. They're my own views, my own thoughts, my own operation, our observations. On May 26th, after the last city council meeting, I got a call around 11:00 PM or so, telling me I need to go check out what happened at city council. Somebody had told me that there had been some SDR concerns raised. As you know, I'm, I'm interested in that. But again, this is unrelated to that. I turned it on and watched, and, as I watched the concerns raised and the amazing remarks made by the youth of this city, I was absolutely sick to my stomach after I watched the responses to the issues that were brought up in last meeting. It wasn't over the SDR piece. I could have cared if, you know, the neighbors were complaining about pot being grown in the neighborhood next door, whatever it was. That was not my concern. It had nothing to do with SDRs. I was sick with the fact that the response to a stabbing in a city-owned park at Pluck Park that had happened over a month prior, that the response from the mayor was, he answered with an explanation that was less than two minutes that summed up to, I don't have a plan, but I'll work on it. Now, I have been asked, why do I feel so strongly to speak about this? I've been even told that I should not speak about this. This is not my issue, this is their issue. Who is their? Why is it us versus them? We're all humans, right? Let me give you a little background on why I feel so strongly about this. My mother was born in 1948 and raised in Atlanta during the Jim Crow South. My grandmother legally had her name changed from Leela to Lee, so it appeared to be a man's name so that she could get approved for a bank loan to open a business called Federal Stamp and Steel Company. It was a very successful business in the South. But she had four children to raise, so she hired a mammy. She, that mammy attended a funeral. She was like family to me. She raised my mom and her siblings. Her own kids were my mom's siblings. This is gonna sound a little bit like The Help now, if you've seen the movie or read the book. It's what my mom grew up with. What happened was, is that because my grandma paid her so well, treated her like family so well, the community was in an uprising. They ended up, when my mom was eight years old, having a cross burned on their front yard. KKK put a cross on their front yard. And my mom could not understand as an eight-year-old wife, anybody would do such a thing. Needless to say, between my grandma, my mother, my mammy, all of the raising that I have had in my lifetime, I don't know what you mean by us versus them. That is not in my raising. It is not how I think. And shame on anybody for thinking that way. I went to a high school that was majority black or brown. That was the demographics of where I lived. My best friends were, were not white. And I didn't go, there were some white folks there. I didn't go cling with them. High school's very clicky. It's just not who I bonded with. It didn't matter. I don't see color. I've heard over the last year how Niagara Falls residents are worn down and tired after so many years of not being heard. I'm ashamed to say I've only gotten involved in the city here in the past year. So their apathy, I don't, I didn't understand. I, I really just didn't get it, at least not until I watched last city council. So many dots have been connecting for me since then. Just today, I read the social justice report. Have any of you read the social justice report? Apparently, it came out on May 26th. If I, file name says May 26th in it, I'm assuming it came out the exact same day that that city council meeting went down. So, why wasn't the report included in the agenda, that even the announcement that that report had been put together? Why was it that when the mayor had to respond to the concerns and questions about Pluck Park, he didn't even mention the report? There are some great things in that report. Ironically, the first paragraph-
Thank you, Cherish.
Thanks very much.
Michael Sipon.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen, excuse my voice, I have problems. I tried to purchase through the Department of Public Works, a memorial tree for my husband who passed away last year. I called before Easter and got the information about it. This was before Easter. Believe it or not, I don't have an email, really, but I gave him, my son-in-law's email, and they were going to contact him, or contact me through the telephone. Through numerous telephone calls to the person at the Public Works, I was told they were short-staffed, she had to do payroll, she was in a meeting, would get back to me, never got back to me. Trust me, I was short-staffed many a time at the hospital, and trust me, I would never be able to tell a patient, I'm short-staffed, and I'll get back to you, would never go. Never heard anything about what's going on. How I'm gonna go, is it gonna go, am I gonna be able to get the tree, anything further? My son-in-law has never heard anything. I don't know, it's, now is not the time to plant a tree, we're probably gonna have to wait to fall, but I just want some kind of response to all my calls, besides, we'll get back to you. I mean, that's just the courtesy, I think. I would like something.
Someone will follow through on that.
Okay, I mean, I mean, how many calls do I have to make? And get enough of no response? That's all I want. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Daniel Eater.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. I'm just here with a small complaint, I live at 629 Ashland Avenue, with the project that happened to Whirlpool, the reconstruction, there is a huge sinkhole, we've been complaining, I have personally, I know I work for the city, I have complained personally for a few years now, probably about seven years ago, we had a dump truck at the top of the 600 block Ashland Avenue, went through the street. They came through, they patched it, now, if you don't slow down, the kids can jump in with their bicycles. But now, down at the end, the other end, which I live at, 629, 635 Ashland, their sinkhole has opened up, and my neighbor just called me and said that now he has sewer issues, and the sewer, the water department's telling him that that's gonna be his responsibility. That sinkhole's been going on for years, there's another one that's down right in front of my daughter's house, which is on the other side of my lot. We need to get somebody down here, we need to get that street redone. I complained about it when they first announced the Whirlpool project. I asked if they were gonna redo our streets, they said yes, they ran gas lines through, soon as they got done with that, they were supposed to redo the street. This street needs to be addressed immediately, because this hole is very dangerous. I have a two-year-old granddaughter, and if she goes to jump in the water puddles or anything like that, she's gonna fall through that hole, she's gonna be under the street. So if you could please make a note of that, and get somebody to take care of it, I would appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Venture.
Hello?
Hello, good evening, Robert Venture of Niagara Falls. I'm not sure of the process that determines which roads get repaved. Some of the roads on this year's paving list really don't need it, such as North Avenue and Sixth Street, they could have been patched. I'm not against repairing roads, or fixing ones that need it, such as 18th Street from Ontario Avenue to Whitney Avenue, 11th Street from Lockport Street to Portage Road, or 24th Street from Pine Avenue to Niagara Street. These streets are in far worse shape than most of the roads on the paving list. Furthermore, there are numerous lots with overgrown grass on which, on them, which I believe they are city-owned, to name a few, Highland and 11th, Lockport and Ontario Avenue, 13th and Peers, 18th and 18th Niagara Avenue. It's the same problem with these lots every year, hopefully it'll be cut soon, residents shouldn't have to look at this year after year, all summer long. Additionally, community development is supposed to have a, community input when it comes to making their budget, I didn't see any notices for the meetings. I heard last month, I heard last month, sorry, I heard over the last month, maybe next time, we could do better advertising when these meetings would be held. In closing, I don't think the city should be in the street lighting business, I think National Grid had the best offer, and I think this is something the city should pursue. Also, when it comes to CARES Act funding, I believe residents should be, be involved on how this money will be spent, the city should have a public forum with residents' input. And we still have a forestry department, I know a lot of residents, they called about trees blocking stop signs, they haven't called since last summer, endorsement's been done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Tillman.
You're okay? All right, she's fine, thank you.
Caleb Tillman.
He's gonna pass? Okay, thank you.
Gloria Nelson.
Gloria? You're good, okay.
Dante Miles.
Dante? Hello?
Hello, again, I wanted to basically have a continuation, and I would urge that those who are in leadership position, to really take a good look at the fourth district zone. Most of the poverty, and I would be, I would, I'm giving it maybe a few percentage, I would say about eighty percent of the crime rate, the homicides, eighteen homicides last year, well, like, we had a stabbing a couple of nights ago, a couple of shootings, like, within the past week. Mostly, all of those occur in the fourth district, like I mentioned the last time I was up here, I understand what redlining is, I understand that there's a certain portion of our city that suffers the most, but gets neglected the most. I think that our local government, that means the administration, because you guys are not elected by district, you're elected as an at-large position, right? So every decision that you make affects every last one of us in this room. I urge that you become more ingrained in the rest of the community. I ask that you get a better understanding of the needs and the issues, and come up with some actual solutions for the rest of the community. How can you actually serve the whole city, in which you're supposed to be making decisions for, if you don't have a clue of what the issues that these portions of our community suffer? I think that's probably one of the biggest causes of apathy in our local government, the non-care, because you don't have to see, I keep talking about that, you, you guys get a chance to ride around the problem. But it's a rare occasion, a rare occasion, many perigiles, many hospital situations, and, you know, fights and stabbings, where I don't see our local government there, it's not your job, however you want to have that, only thing, only thing you'll know is what you see in the media, and the media's only gonna paint it a certain kind of way, but there are people who live in these conditions. Ms. Mary Tillman, she just mentioned that she lives on 19th Street. I don't know anyone, anyone that's in front of me right now that will even hang out or walk down 19th Street, but there are people who have to actually go walk, turn their key, open the door on 19th Street. A lot of people don't have to deal with bullets. I have a house next door to me, I'm actually making a collage, and I will bring it back at some point in time, so you can see, like, I take care of my property, I'm a homeowner, right? I take care of my property, I have a blighted piece of property that has been boarded up, condemned for the last maybe two years now, I've made plenty of calls for this piece of property, I had police come due to issues with their drugs that were being sold, I, I know, because the, before, the night before the first, of every month, was non-stop, all night, right? I have an eight-year-old and I have an eleven-year-old, I won't even let them go outside and play, that's why, when I'm out here campaigning and all this stuff, it's, it hits me different, because I hit certain areas of so much peace, that you don't have to, you don't have to deal with the craziness, you don't have, I don't, I don't see a lot of these different, you know, blighted buildings, there's a such thing I'm not quite sure most of you already know about, it's called the broken window theory, right? And if it doesn't get fixed, it'll only get worse. The problem is, is that we come and we address these issues, and we hope and pray that the people that we elected to sit in these seats and make the decision, we was hoping and praying that you guys would actually care enough, not just to hear us, because y'all have to hear us every other week, but not just to hear us, but actually listen, and listen to get an understanding, and not to give a rebuttal. I think that's probably our biggest issue, that's what adds to the apathy, that's what adds to the not caring, that's what adds to the, let them talk for five minutes and then we'll go to the next one. That's, that's, that's been the culture in this building, I've noticed, not prior to this administration. So I ask that we change the culture, because the only time, only way we're gonna change our situations and change the dynamics, is if we start changing the culture from a leadership position. That's all I got.
Thank you. Hello?
I was Scott Williams, I live at 635, 741, 741 Park, apartment 85. So, just wanted to call, I mean, just come, and speak on a few issues, we have many residents that's here on the Gluck Park issue, just as we were just a few weeks ago. Just having some recent conversations with Ms. Danny Strong and others, that are, you know, very passionate about this issue, you know, just a few bullet points that I really took from the conversation, is one, presence, you know, really wanting to see more of a presence from our police department, within some of these critical, you know, high-prime areas, such as Gluck Park specifically. And again, this isn't to take a shot at our police department, and all roles, anybody in any capacity, can definitely always use improvement, we just learn and always improve. But another bullet point was respect, just as we spoke last time, and like Dante Miles wanted me to mention, is not only do we want more of a presence from our police officers, but community policing, we want them to engage and build relationships, not just be robo-cops and authority figures, because a lot of times, when you do step into having a more of a presence, sometimes that may lead to more arrests, and that's the last thing that we want, we just want more of a relationship with our police department, our city hall, and our community. And then one of the other things that I just wanted to also suggest is, thinking of other creative alternatives, for example, how about empowering our residents? I know that there's a lot of federal dollars out there, there's a lot of different foundations that have resources that can allow you to empower our residents, and just one thing that I throw out there is Niagara Falls peacemakers, you know, we have residents, and I'm sure that we can also work together to recruit and find some other parents, and also residents in the Niagara Falls area, that would love to position themselves and be in some of these higher target areas, and that would be much more cost-effective than having to hire an officer and pay for some overtime. So I'm just also throwing different alternatives that you all can consider, because it's about finding solutions, not just throwing out the problem, right? The High Park Ice Field, I just wanted to touch on that, I don't know if Gene is still here, but I know that he did a lot of great work, him and his son, it's very unfortunate if they do lose the contract and not be there anymore, I just hope that, whatever vendor does come in, that, you know, they do as well of a job. So, I know that as elected officials, mayor, city councilman, and even the city administrator, which we sometimes may overlook, but you are the glue to a lot of this, so, you know, just give you acknowledgement, I know that it can be a tough position, especially trying to appease or just satisfy everybody, and even with the short-term rental situation, I noticed that there's two sides that the media's putting out there, and that we kind of look at when we're looking at the lens of the situation, but I am not a short-term rental owner, but I do care about advocating, you know, for what's right, speaking out for the voice listener that have not, is what we say, and from engaging with both sides, I've learned that there is some common ground. I've learned that you have the side that wants this ordinance, I hear that you have, you have the other side that's advocating against it, it's not that they're necessarily advocating against it, it's just that there's some things in there that they may feel uncomfortable about, so I really urge that you all have more dialogue with both sides, bring it together so we can figure out the best solution and the best policy together, because what I've learned is no side wants illegal operators operating in Niagara Falls. I get that, and I've really taken that from both sides. So again, I encourage having dialogue and finding a common ground, that's how we really come together, we iron things out and find the best solution. So again, thank you for all that you're doing, and thank you for the time.
Thank you. Hello again?
Now, there's a whole lot of points I'm gonna make real quick, but they're really important. Now, as far as the garbage fees, I'm sorry, the garbage fees, is the city still collecting garbage fees? They are? Because I haven't got any notices or whatever, but I see that that, that issue has died down a lot, and I just say that because a lot of people of color and brown skin don't own property, and that kind of issue didn't, didn't really affect a lot of those people. But when they were talking about it, this whole room was filled up, so I'm just wondering if that was just trickled off, or then, you know, we don't pay it no more, because I have paid into it, and if I need a check back, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Okay, and then, a lot of people are here and they're talking about Gluck Park, but where is Mr. Walker? I, you know, I'm, I'm one for just getting down to directness, because we don't have this, this, no explanation, he was a chairman at one time, Gluck Park has been an issue for the longest, where is the representation of him? He's also one of the distinguished people that's on the, the board of this new commissioner that came out on the 26th that nobody knew about. I mean, he's on the board for the hospital too, where all these people are going. I mean, it's, it's a lot of hands being tied in a lot, you know, so I just wanted to mention that. Also, too, the mayor about a year ago, when he first came, I had suggested him, to him about a community project we could have about cleanup through the city, coordinating with the businesses, I gave him that plan over a year ago, but I see Buffalo was picking up that contest that I was trying to describe, I don't know if y'all heard about it or whatever, but it was like linking up the community with the businesses, and if that, that area won, then it was a plot, we could have a block club, but if we can get back to that, that would help the community to come together with the police and, and everybody else. Another thing about the police, and I hear a lot of stories now and then, but I just wanna understand if this is true or not. I'm hearing rumors that, is there, were there eleven officers released from the city? And if so, why? And a lot of these positions, just like in planning, Mr. DeSantis, he's gone, it's been a lot of representatives of the administration that's gone, we don't know why, and then till the situation with the gentleman in, in the, in the jail, I, I didn't really even hear about that, why didn't we have protests about that? The hotels that won't give the parents of the missing girl, they don't, they don't agree with, 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 they said about her missing, but can't the council, or somebody make these businesses give up the video? If I'm incorrect about that, you know, I'm just seeing things on internet or whatever, I don't know, but-
That's a problem.
You know, it's issues, and also too, who would wanna come to a, a hotel where you can't even get a, a video, if something happened to your loved one? And, and you know, I was thinking and trying to get people to understand, maybe we need to protest those businesses.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know, I've got plenty more, but we'll come back to that. But that, you know, I'm just here for the community, and I don't mind asking the tough questions and stuff like that, because who else is gonna ask, ask them?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anthony Jolos.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, thank you for allowing me to speak, I am Anthony Jolos, and I live at 1124 Pasadena Avenue. I am here on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. DuBois, I have known Kurt and Kathy for close to thirty years, ever since our children went to school together and played soccer together. We have become close friends, I found them to be honest, hardworking individuals. They're successfully owned and operated DuBois Physical Therapy for over twenty-five years. They take pride in their properties, meticulously maintaining the inside and outside, spotless inside, and very well landscaped outside. On a personal side, they are very generous- On a personal side, they are very generous, helping those in need, both individuals and organizations. I have found them to be people of honesty and integrity. They are loving parents and grandparents. They are loyal to their friends and family, offering them help and support they, that they may need. Now, getting to the Airbnb on Creekside. Uh, um, it is profitable. Nobody goes into a venture to lose money. I live down the street from the property and I know it can be said, but you live, you don't live next door. This is true. However, I drive past it multiple times in the week, at random times of the day, evening and night. I also ride my bicycle past it. I can also, I can only report on what I observed and did not see. What I saw was families leaving to go to local attractions, come back, cooking at the grill, using the pool, and dining outside. I have never observed wild parties, bonfires, or inappropriate behavior. And I'm sure that this is, there is an amicable solution to this issue. Uh, maybe the council could recommend a non-biased third-party mediator to resolve the problem in a way that would be fair to all, or seek other solutions to, uh, to find a resolution. I kept my comments brief, uh, but I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. No more speakers. Before we move on, um, I just want to say that the entire council knows and the administration knows that we have a problem in Gluck Park. We have a problem with crime. We know that. And I'm probably gonna get in trouble, but I'm gonna say this anyway. But it's very difficult to change culture. Thank you, Tim. It's very difficult to change a culture. And one of the ways we can help this generation and future generations reduce crime is if we can figure out a way so that we teach our children not to want to kill our neighbors' children. Because if we can figure out a way to do that, then Niagara Falls will be a better place, the world will be a better place, and America will be a better place. Um, and just bear that in mind when people tell us that it's the council that we've got to figure out a way to change the culture. So we'll move along, um... I'm sorry. Oh, okay. Oh, thank, thank you very much. Okay, so we'll move along to the administrative update portion. Tony?
Mr. Chairman, uh, a couple of meetings ago, Councilman Soto had asked if Jim, if, uh, the city assessor, Jim Burke, could come in to speak to, uh, an item that was on the agenda as related to the certificate of base percentages. Uh, Jim is here tonight to, uh, address that issue.
Hello, Jim.
I forget how spirited these meetings were. Beautiful, thank you, I guess. Um, first, I'd like to extend my condolences to the Tompkins and the Nellie family. Also, my wife and I will keep both families in our prayers, or their families in our prayer. It's just terrible.
Thank you.
Um, but yes, the mayor and the, uh, city administrator just wanted me to answer, uh, any questions the council may have regarding the homestead and non-homestead base proportions workshop, which is kind of like, uh, calculus. It's a little complicated, but, um, it, it's, it's basically, as, as you know, we have a two-tiered tax system. Homestead pays one rate, the, uh, the, the residential properties, and the non-homestead, the commercial properties pay another rate. So all this spreadsheet does is basically just apportions both, both of them, you know, based on the equalization rate. So, uh, typically in May, I give you guys a, a certificate of base percentages. And all that basically is, is just a, it just verifies a prior year's total, what the equalization rate is. Is, I'm not sure if you know, we have an equalization rate of 71% went down to 67% this year, which means the state is basically saying we're assessed at 67% of full value. But within that, the commercial rate is 55, I'm sorry, is 55%. And the, and the residential rate is 67%. So within that, those, our equalization rate, they're saying the, the, the commercial rate is actually much lower. And that's why they pay a higher, that's why they pay a higher tax rate. So in May, I typically give you that and you verify it. I verify it with the state first. They look at my numbers and they say, "Okay, Jim, it looks good. Give it to the council," and you guys verify that. Now, prior to the budget, uh, I give to the controller, once we get the new numbers, as far as the new taxable values, uh, I give to Dan in the, in the controller's office, the, uh, adjusted base proportions, which basically that produces a, another spreadsheet, which this is how you guys adopt the rate for each, uh, for the, uh, commercial and the residential. And then within that, you guys can do a local adjustment, uh, which basically you can say, "Okay, well, the commercial, they're paying a little too much," or the residential, so you might shift that rate to the residential. It's a shift. It's a locally adjusted, I think you understood that, Mr. Soto. I think we had a, we had a conversation at one point, but, you know, the only way, easiest way to explain this is kind of like, if you look at the taxable value of, of both the commercial and the residential, $1.3 million. So of that, 69% of it is residential, 31% of it is the commercial. But when, when we determine what the tax rate is for each one of those classes, the residential doesn't pay the 69% because the commercial is assessed at a lower rate. In other words, their assessments are lower based on the state's information than the residential. So we apportion that. It's basically what we do. So you, and that's where you make that shift. And that's why, at this point, we have such a disparity between, and homestead rate right now is $19 per thousand. The non-homestead is $38 per thousand, which is really hard to, those numbers, until we do a reassessment, will never come together. They'll never, you know, at a time there was, you know, let's, let's shift to 10% every year, but it just, we're just so far removed from a reassessment, it just will, will never happen. And that's another, I'm just gonna segue into another item, which will be, this is why we need to do a reassessment. I mean, it's, it's been way too long. And I'm just gonna give you a couple of examples here. Here's a house in, uh, LaSalle area, assessed for $67,000, sold for $197. Another house assessed for $71,000, sold for $181. Another house assessed for $73,000, sold for $171. Now, at the same time, we have another house assessed for $65,000, sold for $60,000. So if anybody on the council thinks those properties should be paying the same amount of tax, when one's worth $190 and one's worth $60, raise your hand, because, I mean, it's, the values are just way out of whack. And it's, it's really got to be done soon. And that's, you know, again, I always segue to the, to the reassessment, uh, but, you know, we do have, you know, you have to realize that when we do reassessment, the tax rate will go down. You know, so in other words, a house assessed for $40,000 may now be worth $30,000. You know, and those are the people that'll be saying, "Stop the reassessment. We need, you know, we don't want to raise our tax." Well, you know, it might be assessed for 30 now, plus the tax rate goes down, so they're gonna, you know, their decrease will be huge. And even somebody whose assessment may go from 67 to 100, their taxes will probably stay the same because the tax rate will go down. And I have examples here, which I gave Mr. Spanbauer, of other towns that did reassessments where the tax rate went down significantly. So it doesn't mean it's a tax increase. Again, my taxes, you know, will probably go up maybe a hundred dollars, but my assessment will probably go up 50,000, you know? So, you know, your assessment may go up $30,000, but your taxes will stay the same or maybe even go down. But you have any questions regarding the, the base proportions? I have, I have some literature that I can give you, which may explain it a little better.
What struck me from your, uh, spreadsheet was not so much the base proportions, but your assessed value of the property citywide...
Right.
Versus your estimate of the market value of that property, the gap between those two.
Yep.
Can you address, um, the, uh, I guess, the only way to put it is the detrimental effect of that gap between what you assess, what you've assessed property at and what it, what you estimate its market value to be?
So that's done by the state. Every month, we transfer, we transmit every sale to the state. And we, and we mark on there whether it's a valid sale. In other words, not valid sale means somebody sold it to their brother or it was in a state sale or things like that. And the state looks at those sales and they also, they look at what the current assessments are on those, for both the commercial and the residential, and they determine what that equalization rate is. So in other words, you take the assessed value, the taxable value, and you have to determine what the full mar- market... In other words, if it's 55% equalization rate for the commercial, you have to take the taxable, divide it by .55, and you come up with a number much higher. And it's not as high for the, for the residential, and that's why there's that gap in the, in the two-tier system. And, and then that changes every year. That's why without doing a reassessment, you will never be able to bring those together. As you see, like this year, the commercial is 55, residential 67. Last year, 62 and 73. 2015, 90% equalization for the residential, 75 for the commercial. Uh, and this is 2017, 91 for the residential, so that went up. In other words, they're saying the values actually went down. 59 for the commercial. So that's, they, that fluctuates so much. So when we do, if and when we do a reassessment, we can probably bring those two rates together. If not, we would probably have a five-year window where we can gradually bring them together. This, it's been 16 years since we did a reassessment, so this is so far gone that we'll never be able to, to just do 10%. It would just be too much of a burden on the residential class.
In your capacity as a city assessor, can you say which neighborhoods benefit from the lack of property reassessment and which neighborhoods suffer from the lack of it?
I would say you can drive around the city, I mean, looking at, so you'd be surprised in some areas where you think it's a more of a, an area that's, you know, never used, the values would not appreciate. They're going up a little bit, but not like some of the other neighborhoods, LaSalle and DeVeau. You know, properties like LaSalle and DeVeau, those, and it, and it's not every house in LaSalle. Now, I'm not gonna pick on LaSalle or DeVeau, you know, but they'll go up. And most people I speak to say, "Geez, five years ago, they said, 'When are you gonna do a reassessment?'" "You were on the board that suggested we do a reassessment, that the local board, and the state also said this, the city has to do a reassessment." That was five, six years ago. And values have just gone crazy. But to answer your question, you know, obviously the areas, you know, 11th Street, uh, areas off of Main Street downtown by the casino, those properties, you know, 15 years ago, last time we did a reassessment, we're maybe assessed for 30. Maybe they went up to 40, but with the tax rate going down, they're gonna get a huge, a decrease. So that would really help those people out.
Since, since a reassessment wouldn't change the tax levy, are certain neighborhoods carrying the freight?
They definitely are.
For neighborhoods where properties are appreciating rapidly?
That's correct, yep. And again, even the ones that, you know, we say they're carrying the freight, even the high-end, they're assessed, it's, it's not gonna be sticker shock. They're gonna, you know, most people, you see somebody with the houses on the market for $350, it's assessed for $150. You know, I mean, they realize that their, their, you know, their taxes may go up a little bit, you know? But then there's other people who, you know, that's why we, if we do, once we start this, we'll have public meetings and we'll explain to people that, hey, you know, it does not mean a tax increase. Your assessment may go, may go up 10,000, but your taxes will go down because the rate goes down. And I, again, I gave that to Mr. Spanbauer, the rates of local towns that did reassessments and how the rates were. Some of them went in half, so, and, and...
Thank you.
Property tax increase does not mean a tax increase, or, I'm sorry, property assessment increase does not mean a tax increase.
Thank you, Jim. Very much. Tony, back to you.
The only thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is, uh, at the last meeting, um, Councilman Tompkins asked what the status was of bus patrol. Um, in speaking with Corporation Council, uh, the hope is, is that there will be a resolution, uh, presented to this body at, uh, your next council meeting in this month.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any questions for the administration?
I just had one request that I had forgot to give you earlier, 24th and Niagara, was one of the bush blocking the stop sign issues. And while we're at it, um, you had made this statement earlier about children and fixing everybody at home. And I, I wish I could sit here and pretend that I didn't live in those neighborhoods because I have. So when people look at Gluck Park, look across the street at 1720, I lived there. 18th and Ontario Avenue, I lived there. 21st and Ferry, I lived there. 15th, between Pine and Elmwood, I lived there. So suggesting that just, it's just gonna miraculously go away by fixing things at home, which I truly believe it starts there too, to just say that without a solution, I, I think is a little condescending to the people that are here.
Okay, that's okay. Okay, so I believe we're gonna skip a controller's report, Dan, is that right? Okay, so thank you for that. Um, we're gonna start to review the agenda items. Kathy?
Item one.
I'd just like to make a comment on this. Um, and I gotta make sure people understand. Um, an RFP goes out for a bid like this, and Mr. Correll, from what I've heard, you've done a great job. I used to work at Niagara View University.
I would just point out...
That's item one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We got item two is what you're talking about.
So, so we're gonna get there because we want to amend that too. And so, um, go ahead, Kathy.
Item two.
So we're gonna, we want to amend this, but I guess I'm gonna defer to Councilman Spanbauer before we talk about that.
Just, um, but people need to know, there's an RFP process. Um, it comes in, the city has a team that ranks the RFP process. There were 11 vendors that were, um, sent out information about putting a bid in. Um, there were two proposals received, and this team that our administrator put together ranks the teams. They've made a recommendation to this body of what team to go with. So I think it's important to know that it's not just thrown out there. There was a bid put in, an RFP sent out, a team reviewed it, and they've made a recommendation to this body.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. So I guess what we want to do is amend, uh, this resolution or this, uh, item with one word. And correct me if I'm wrong, Councilman...
I, I do want to, because I was looking through it. It actually says it in there twice. So once at the beginning, where it says, "We respectfully request you authorize the mayor," and then in the language at the end of the, um, item.
So I've got the, the, uh, the language at the end. Where was the first one, Councilman?
Right at the beginning, where it says, "We respectfully request you to authorize to enter into an agreement." So if we were changing the agreement into negotiate versus execute...
Okay, so...
Enter into, to me, is the same thing as execute.
So would change enter into into negotiate, that's fine.
You can still leave that, you can leave that item, that language at the end, I just changed the other portion, Jim.
Okay, so then... Okay, so that's what I had originally. So we're gonna just amend the last paragraph of this. So the last paragraph, instead of saying, um, authorize the mayor to execute an agreement, it's just will merely change to authorize the mayor to negotiate an agreement. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's satisfactory to you, then?
Well, it says, I just figured, like, in the beginning, it just says, "Enter into." I'm just, I've, like I said, I'm not the legal expert. I just figured I'd make sure we cover both sides of that where it says, "Into an agreement."
So can I have a motion to amend?
Well...
I'm sorry.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Mazur, in that, in that last sentence in the resolution where we're striking the word execute and replacing it with negotiate, um, after the words Corporation Council, strike the question mark and add the phrase, "And return to the city council for its review," and then question mark at the end of the word review. So that the amended section of this resolution reads, "Will the council so approve and authorize the mayor to negotiate an agreement and any other documents necessary to retain Five Jays Enterprises Incorporated in a form acceptable to the Corporation Council and return it to the city council for its review?"
Is there something the council should know about before we vote on, uh, amend and then vote on this item from your standpoint? No?
No, but, but I just wanna, just to be clear, it would be return to city council, which I have no problem with. Returning to city council for review, so is the city council going to take action? Or are we just submitting this for your review?
Well, just the way other items on today's agenda have a lease attached to it, so we can review it before we vote on it.
No problem.
Is that okay?
Yep, no problem.
Okay, so then do we need a motion now to amend?
So move, uh, the amendment as, uh, stated, uh, by the council members?
So Kathy, we're gonna call the roll to, uh, just...
We need a second.
We're gonna call the roll just to amend the item.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Yes.
Or you for amendment?
So we'll continue with item three?
Item three. Item four. Item five. Item six. Item seven. Item eight. Item nine.
Uh, just to let the public know, because some people commented on this. I was the, uh, principal... principal, uh, catalyst for this resolution. Uh, my main concern is that, as stated in the resolution, while I value the role of a local planning board and local zoning board of appeals, under state law, they're advisory. That's their role, to be advisory, not to create ordinances, not to create legislation. And consequently, when you have a provision in the ordinance that says for the city council to take a position in opposition to the planning board, you needed a unanimous vote at the city council, that's exceedingly restrictive. No legislative body anywhere has that kind of provision, unanimous. You've seen the Congress of the United States lately. Can you imagine a unanimous vote of that body? Even our county legislature, can you imagine a unanimous vote of the county legislature? So all we're doing is calling for a public hearing that would put this one small section of the zoning ordinance and make it compatible with the other, with the section that actually follows it, where an amendment would require, uh, four votes and a simple adoption of a planning board recommendation would require three votes. We're taking, we're simply taking away the restriction of a unanimous vote. There is, there's no legislative provision anywhere that would require a unanimous vote. The city charter doesn't call for it. General Municipal Law of New York State doesn't call for it. This is, and it's my words, it's not the council's words, uh, when I use the phrase, uh, serious usurpation, those are my words. I don't want to put words in them, I'm one of my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
I'd like just to make one more. Um, for the residents that know, Councilman Soto came on after Antetoum resigned, I, I've got to thank him for the guidance he's provided this body and with some of the things he has brought up and has challenged this body, um, he's been a very knowledgeable source. Um, just with something like this, looking at our, our data that we have and some of the ordinance saying, you know, it's not right, so I just want to thank him for his work and his efforts.
Yeah, I, I, I definitely mimic those sentiments as well. I just think the timing of this ordinance stinks because of everything that's going on, but I definitely appreciate the knowledge that you have brought forth up here.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, are we prepared to move forward then with the votes?
Yes.
Okay, Kathy?
Item one, city clerk's claim report for the month of May twenty twenty-one, received in five. Item two, approval of the contract to Five Jays Enterprises Inc. for operation of the High Park Ice Pavilion.
Call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion? I think I need a motion to, I'm sorry.
So moved. As amended, as amended.
As amended.
So moved.
Call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Yes.
Four yeas, item approved. Item three, approval, approval of CHDO agreement with Habitat and Humanity, Inc. for six one sixty-first street.
Prove it. Call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Yes.
Four yeas, item approved. Item four, approval of the contract with RuPaul Corporation, two twenty-five Second Street and two thirty Third Street parking lot for parking.
Move for approval.
Call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Yes.
Four yeas, item approved. Item five, approval of the contract with Niagara Beautification Commission for rent of entry and access to city properties for maintenance, preservation.
Move for approval.
Call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Yes.
Four yeas, item approved. Item six, approval of funding for the aquarium of Niagara Whirlpool Gardens Plaza Project, grant administration.
Move for approval.
Call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Yes.
Four yeas, item approved. Item seven, approval of business license application for Culperts Pub, Inc.
Move for approval.
Call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Call the roll. Yes, I'm sorry.
Four yeas, item approved. Item nine, relative to amending the city and Niagara Falls zoning ordinance, section thirteen oh two point four point two E.
Move for approval.
Call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
No.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Yes.
Four yeas, item approved. Item nine, relative to amending the city and Niagara Falls zoning ordinance, section thirteen oh two point four point two E.
Move for approval.
Call the roll.
Councilman Kennedy?
No.
Councilman Soto?
Yes.
Councilman Spanbauer?
Yes.
Councilman Motion?
Yes.
Three yeas, one name, item approved.
Thank you, everyone, for attending. Just before I adjourn the meeting, just, uh, keep, uh, former Mayor Anello's, uh, family and Councilman Tompkins' family in your thoughts. They, they sure could use your prayers and this meeting is adjourned.